We call the regular city council meeting on July 3rd, 2024 to order at 7:05 PM. Board of the Center Rooms, please stand and join me in pitch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have two public hearing agendas. Please. How did that happen? There might be one there or in a box over there maybe, or the one on the bulletin board. Sorry. Mayor Allison.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Wendy Rainey.
Here.
Dave Zastro.
Here.
Kristen Carpenter.
Here.
And Ken Jones.
Here.
That is all of council.
Injection to the approval of the regular agenda. Hearing none, the agenda will be approved. Any disclosures of conflicts of interest or ex parte communications? Hearing none. Now we'll move on to communications by petition for visitors. We don't have any guest speakers, so audience comments regarding any agenda items. Anybody here to speak to us on agenda items? Seeing none. We will move on to chairpersons and representatives of boards of commissions. Hospital board.
Hi, council members. We, I'm coming to let you know that in May, we finished our audit and super proud of our finance team. We had our first since my time in that I can remember totally clean audit. So really proud of Dana and that team that just have been working to uncover stones and correct everything when they uncover it and then uncover again, uncover again. So with that audit, we did post operational loss of 272,000. So with the city appropriation, we had an almost net neutral year, which is awesome. We've come a long way. We keep working to get to that place where we're positive and it's just a really hard hurdle to climb. So I continue to really hope for collaboration from any and every place that we can find it, whether it's hospitals within Alaska and/or collaboration or integration with MB. So still, still waiting, but super hopeful that something will happen in that arena. Our audit, as well as the annual evaluation of all of our services is in our packet, in our board meeting packet that's posted online from May. So if anybody wants to see that, it's available. Any questions?
Yeah. So as you say, you're hopeful for other hospitals within the state. Are we soliciting anything? Are we just kind of standing by hoping someone will come and?
We're participating in a study with some hospitals in southeast Alaska as well as Fairbanks to look at how we could collaborate with, whether it's group purchasing with electronic medical records or other supplies. We are a part of a large group purchasing organization, but there are ways to collaborate. A lot of stuff, whether it's billing or revenue cycle can be done remotely. So trying to see if we can gain some economies of scale by working with another hospital. So definitely evaluating every, everything we can.
And are there other, I guess, hospitals in similar situations to us throughout the state? Are we kind of a unique?
There are fewer that are city owned right now. Petersburg, Bartlett, Fairbank, well, Fairbanks isn't city owned, but they are independent. And then South Peninsula. So all of those CEOs and I are in contact and then have a grant that's actually helping us study how we could collaborate better. And then a lot of communities have demonstrated how tribal collaboration works really well.
Thank you for talking about that. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Good job.
Congratulations on your good audit.
Yeah, I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the school board here? I think they have a meeting tonight.
I think they had it today or this morning.
Don't see anybody from the school here. So any other boards, commissions, representatives here? See any? And school is on summer break, so the consent calendar is before you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'd like to pull ordinance 1217.
Item six. They will put that under resolutions.
Some, maybe we'll go 17A.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, on the rest of the consent calendar, Wendy Rainey.
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter.
Yes.
Tom Baylor.
Yes.
Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Ken Jones.
Yes.
Dave Zastro.
Yes.
The consent calendar is approved.
Okay, thank you. Our minutes are in the consent calendar. We don't have any consideration for this. This takes us to reports of officers and the mayor's report. I sent out the, should we all see the governor's vetoes by now, probably? The school did get their $680 one-time funding, so I think the school is pretty, pretty well set. They ended up with pretty much all their revenue that they wanted, so they are good. Fourth of July loosely, what's that?
They didn't get all they wanted.
They're getting everything from their wish list and their want list and their needs list. So that's pretty, pretty well getting everything they wanted. The 4th of July stuff is tomorrow. We'll be doing stuff starting at noon at the Hall of Centrix Park. Everybody's invited to that. We are still being asked to sign on to another letter on that housing, housing bill that they're trying to push through the federal legislature. I think you guys got something on it earlier, but I just got another email today. They're, they want us to sign up, sign on to a new letter. Anyway, I'll send that out to you. And I have not replied to them.
Okay.
At this point in time, it's a federal thing. We did sign off early on it along.
Helper.
Couple, yeah, the helper act, yeah. So anyway, other than that, too. Questions? Yeah.
Are we gonna dunk you tomorrow at the?
The Girl Scouts are trying to twist my arm around.
They were talking to me about it too. To help push that towards it, not for me.
I told them that I would consider, I haven't promised them yet. I did offer some, a bucket of baseballs.
Well, the vice mayor should step in because that might be healthier, right?
Absolutely. You can go for it.
Okay, so that takes us to the city manager's report. Sam?
So I actually, Kevin and I met with Murkowski's aides who swung by and included us in their visit, which is really great. Andy and I have a new local, well, she's not local, but we're in her jurisdiction for an aide that is representing this area. So we talked about a lot of things. We have homework that we're working on. One in particular is Murkowski moved forward the bear fence to the next level. We just recently got inspected by D E C who deemed us hard for the bears. So we're gonna put all that in together. I'm gonna ask Charlotte and Andy Morris to put a letter together supporting that bear fence and get that to them so they have some ammunition. But we talked about a lot of different things. We have a lot of different homeworks to work on, so I'm pretty excited about that. And they seemed super excited and they, every, so they, right at the beginning of the meeting, said, okay, we're gonna take notes on our phones, so don't break them down. And everything that we said, they're just typing it in a hundred miles an hour with their thumbs. So they were just really engaged. It was very nice. So that is on my list for sure to start really getting, working that. We have a fire marshal candidate who's gonna come up and we're working on that the week, or on the 17th or the following week is figuring out his schedule. He has a lot of experience. We had an interview that included Rodney Mattson, Sergeant Haynes, and me and Andy. It was really good. So I'm pretty excited about that and looking forward to him coming. He'll come on a Thursday so he can go to the volunteer meeting or EMS and hang out with the fire. Because we still have to, we have two fire employees, Justin and Anna. So we'll meet them and spend some time with them to learn about things and also the other public safety site. On the other side, the employment role, we are not getting a lot of applications. So we are talking about positions and, and you know, just looking at ways of doing business. So I'll keep you guys posted as we move through that. Right now I kind of have three goals in mind. One, how do we develop pathways for people to move up and move within the organization so that they can develop their skill sets? Also, how do we, of course, save some money and that's always important, but I don't wanna create Frankenstein jobs with some money where you can never fill it again. We've had those issues before.
Span of control.
Ah, that's it. And trying to figure out the span of control a little bit better. It just, it just needs to be reined in a little bit so that everybody can spend a little more time focusing on the bigger picture, their department heads. So working on that, I'll keep you posted, do the current process through the council as we work through what that is. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
When are we getting the police unit?
Oh, yes, July 22nd. He has housing, he's packing his truck and heading up the highway right now. So he will be at work until 22nd.
When was the pool liner made up?
Duncan is here. He could talk about that. He also is gonna give a report, so we'll just let him. We'll let him talk about that and his brochure, you guys. Yes.
Hey, Sam.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Sam, I was just suggesting that you were talking about getting letters of support for the bear fence and you had mentioned Andy Morris, which is actually a really good, really good person to be out there supporting it. But I would suggest, as far as support or a district ranger would be a much more powerful letter to get, being the manager of the entire district and the land manager adjacent to it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. All right, Duncan, give us a scoop.
Hi, good evening. First on the pool liner, so we've just signed off the engineers drawings for that. They are currently working to a timeframe where they will be looking to install the first week of August. We will probably close last couple of weeks of July so we can, because we need to clear the deck of all the equipment, so all the diving boards and starting blocks and other things need to disappear. Need to still have that in total blood from the, from the contractor, but that's what we're looking at at the moment. So as soon as we have confirmed dates, we'll be announcing. So yeah, here, I'm here to talk proudly about our new summer events activity guide. To my knowledge, it's the first time the city's had something like this. It's reasonably jam-packed with, with all sorts of hat links. There's about 600, 500 copies of these being circulated around. We've got plenty in storage if we need to restock. I guess my plea to, to the council is to act as my greatest cheerleaders and tell people about these. You know, it's really important to get the word out because a lot of things in here, we are requiring a pre-registration, which is again slightly different from, from normal Cordoba operandai, so we can plan things and have appropriate staff and bits and pieces. So yeah, so that's, that's it. I'm really proud of it. It's been a lot of hard work pulling it together. The general plan is to have one of these every quarter. Some are gonna be bigger, some are gonna be smaller depending on what activities we've got and to include other things happening in the city. At the moment, I've taken the lead, so it's all Parks and Rec, but there are other things which happen in this town which should be included as well. So yeah, welcome questions, feedback?
All the pictures show bright sunny sunshine and people in shirts and t-shirts.
Yes, yes, we, we don't have too many of our own, but.
That's good, good information.
Cool, thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
I saw a pile of them at the clinic, maybe a week or so ago.
Yeah, yeah. We tried to put them as far and wide as, as we can. Ultimately, these types of things, you know, grand plan would be to send them to every post office box so that people actually have it. Not quite there yet, but yeah, in the future, I think that's a good idea.
It looked like the pop-up play session at the park today was, had some good attendance.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we did, we did alright. Always want more, alright? So if you can get the word out.
We're on our second batch. They're going pretty fast out at the coffee shop, so.
Correct.
I would just say, is there an opportunity for this to be all QR based? Where I can go and scan something for this whole thing? I mean, I see something here scan for volunteers, scan a register for something.
It's on the city website on the front page as a downloadable PDF.
But there's not a current?
No.
The bulletin's around town or at Parks and Rec or any of these places?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so we put out little flyers, posters which have a QR code which goes directly to it electronically. Ultimately, we probably wanna move away from a PDF because it's not great and have a sort of a, you might have seen, a lot of places have what's called an ebook in places, which is an electronic flippable thing. Yeah, we can go to that, but I think it's a great start.
Absolutely.
Yeah, always room for improvement at some point. Yeah, appreciate everybody's support, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Duncan, thank you.
I wanna see how popular the pause in the pool is. I'm excited about that one.
Any update on the ownership of the fisherman?
Yeah, actually, I just kind of fell off my radar because it's like a long time ago that we talked about it. So after speaking with DNR and Kate and having a meeting with all of us there, in reality, we don't need to own the current yakweer because they're gonna tear it out. We need to apply for the permit, the lease, the easement, and so we're moving on that right now. And you know, the state needs to give somebody permission to tear it up. I think that's the direction we have settled on. There is, we, Ewan and HDL has applied for the, is moving forward with the application for the flood plain permit. And then Copper River Watershed is completing the application. They're gonna turn it in and there is a meeting on the 18th to talk about the construction, to review with DNR the construction and all the things that we need and then hopefully get it out to public comment. So we, we're pretty much not gonna see it happen. The construction literally happened this winter, which is too, too far down. But we will be ready to roll next winter.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that's what Kate was saying, the construction probably 2026 and they're gonna use the money they have in hand to buy some of, you know, if they need to buy steel or whatever other supplies and stuff, they can buy that next year and stage it and be ready.
And then it sounds like my comment to one of the employees about having trucks sitting there idling all day while they're in shopping, made it up the chain? I hope it was addressed.
It was, sent up the change, yeah. And I spoke to a couple of people and I'm going to send out it all, send an email. But I wanted to have a chat with a couple of department heads before I do that.
Yeah, just, you know, fleet-wide, if everybody's doing that, that's all. That's six bucks a gallon down there. That's a lot of money. What is that?
I said it's a lot of CO2.
Thank you. Okay, Sam, did you have Colin?
Here. Colin is out of town, but Tony is here. If anybody can put a report in, if anybody has any questions on them, so you should be able to help out.
His comment was down there today. It's looking great. Boy, what a change.
We saw a houseboat going in today.
They did, yeah.
So we're looking at, what, a couple more weeks and everything should be buttoned up?
Yes, maybe.
Yeah, maybe. We have, we're, we have a punch list and things like that, but I think in a couple of weeks, Tony, we're hoping to be able to open parking. I almost wanna say that really quietly because I don't think I know we're often like I juice ourselves.
I've been saying a couple of weeks for a month or so now. They did open a little piece at the big parking lot long-term down there, only enough for maybe 12 cars or so, but starting, I think they're gonna set car stops maybe Friday, but probably Monday, finish up the rest of it. I guess still gonna put concrete to light poles and stuff like that, but I'm here in a couple of weeks, but I've heard that before. I'm hoping less than that.
Is the apron done for the drive-down that?
It is not.
Do you have to pour?
That I think is beginning of next week you're gonna pour. So for the ADA parking areas and the apron to the drive-down, it'll be, I think, next week, early.
You're making good progress.
And we do have water on four of the docks now.
Thanks. Any, is electricity on?
No, they're still waiting for a CT cabinet, which I don't know what that is, but it's got to do electrical. I think they're going up, one of the owners here for the electrical, which has been great. So you know, when he's here, he wants to get it done. But he's going to Anchorage, he's gonna actually pick that panel up and bring it back.
Great. The crew's a little late right now. I know that they took a long, they're taking a long break over the fourth.
They all deserve it.
Hey, Tony, I got a non-South Harbor question.
Okay.
The Northville boat launch, is there plans to put a dock back in there at some point this summer?
Yes, we just borrowed that to be the temporary bridge between J float and I float because those parts we're using is part of H and G.
Okay.
Once they have that gangway done from down to G float and everything, we'll put it back.
Excellent, great, thanks.
Thanks, Tony.
You're welcome.
Ashley, did you have Ashley speaking? I wrote her.
Hi, I'm here to talk about the walking tours the Cordoba Museum has been doing for the last month. Kathy Renfeld put us in contact with Uncruises and they're a 36-passenger cruise ship that comes in on Mondays. And so we're doing two walking tours, starting at the harbor and then making our way up, zigzagging through downtown all the way to the Red Dragon and ending at the museum. So far, we're having great success. The cruise ship's passengers seem to love it. We're averaging 22 people every Monday and typically they have roughly 25 people on the ships. So we're getting most people doing those walking tours. And we do have interest from the public now, since they've seen us out and about, that there's potential, maybe towards the end of this summer, but probably next, to open that up for the general public and do some more planning.
Great, we're gonna be with your company for a day.
A day. It doesn't take all day.
It doesn't take all day, but the, we've been opening the museum after the tour to allow the, those guests to also go through the historic and art galleries.
Could they be spending some money at the store, gift shop?
Yes, they are predominantly on Mike Anderson pottery.
Great. Okay, thank you, Ashley. Anything else, Sam?
No.
Any other questions for Sam?
I'm gonna jump in.
Okay.
This didn't make the packet. I think you all got a handout though. I brought this up previously, the lead service line inventory that's required by the EPA. Emily has done a great job putting together both this flyer and a website, or not a website, a page on our website that really just baby steps people through. It's a pretty simple process, but we're, what we're trying to do is get as much public engagement to do their own self-assessment of their water line coming into their house because ultimately we'll need to show the state that we've targeted a certain percentage of the homes to show that we have, you know, a statistically valid sample. And so the more community members that we can get involved, the higher that number is that we don't have to go out and actually reach out to homeowners and do those inspections ourself. So we're working, we've sent out this flyer through the email blast, through the website. I'll be posting it in the normal city locations and just if you could help spread the word as well, we're gonna put it in the paper and we'll make sure it's in the next council packet as well. So it's a pretty simple test, you may, I mean, besides having to go into your crawl space.
What?
It's really, you just have to go to where your, the water line enters your house with a magnet and see if the magnet sticks to your pipe or not. If you have plastic, then obviously that's not an issue. But yeah, so, and then there's a website that the state has that we provided a link to where you just enter in your information and then that information eventually gets back to our consultant to help us build out the inventory, so.
Okay, cool, thank you. Any question for?
Sorry to say that tax bills were mailed on Monday. So, but I think when it's a huge mailing like that, they said they go through Anchorage no matter what. So I don't think they've hit the boxes yet. And Tina does an amazing job with that. She's so meticulous and it just makes me very happy to see the way she cares about making sure that they all get to people because we hear about it from a lot of people because you can't send them certified and we just have to trust the mail system. And we also have Tina's job out for hire right now because she's put in her notice to retire, which I'm very excited for her to retire as she's well-deserving of that. So we hope to fill that while she's still here and have a little bit of an overlap.
When is she done?
August 31st. So she also said she's not going anywhere, she's not leaving town, she's just gonna travel a little, so she's still willing to help, even if, you know, if we don't hire until a little bit later. Otherwise, with the break of no meetings, no second meeting last month, I tried to look at the cemetery again. I don't know if you've noticed, Malvin did a great job and the cemetery on the highway has this new sign which looks great. And then I've just been trying to put the big map that I have like coffee stains on and is in a really weird format on the website, I mean, on my computer. I put it into Excel and at least it's way easier to see. And I happen to have had several different people ask about locations after I did that. And I'm like, here, let me snip this one piece out and blow it up for you. And that's been great. So anyway, it, it's, it's nice to just tackle some things that you don't otherwise get to and that was one of them. And that's, I think, about it. I can answer questions, yeah.
Questions for Kurt? Thank you, Susan. We've got a few correspondence letters in our packet. Any comments or?
I was just wondering, the letter from Chance and Martin, if anybody with the city manager or the planners gotta respond and just say, I mean, it sounds like he needs to talk to planning and zoning about variance or? city manager or the planner's gotta respond and just say, I mean, it sounds like he needs to talk to planning and zoning about variance, or I just wondered if anybody was responding.
Yes, we're, I'm, I'm not sure that we're gonna have someone to act to him, but we.
Okay. I realize it's not an easy answer.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, then we'll move on to our ordinances and resolutions. Number 16, item resolution 072427. Resolution of the council with the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into the sole source contract with GB Jones and Associates to complete a wastewater master plan. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, I support it, it's something we're gonna have to get figured out, get moving on, save some money to do.
Yeah, I'm also in favor, I appreciate. It's pretty clear what we're doing, so. Appreciate that. I'll have favor of getting this done, so. Move forward.
Anybody else have any thoughts on this?
Mayor Allison, Councilman Sherman.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I'm in favor, in particular, we've had great luck working with GB Jones in the past, and um, this is something that we've all known has to be, that needs to be done, and, um, I think wastewater has kind of taken a backseat, and so it just makes a lot of sense, and it will enable us to get funding and grants, um, once we have this master plan in place.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? This is, this is a resolution, so it says wastewater, so. All those in favor of resolution 072427, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, passes unanimously. AF17, resolution 072428, the resolution of the council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter the sole source contract with GB Jones and Associates to complete a water master plan. So.
Second.
That's my favor, now I support it. Again, sir?
Same.
Very clear. I think similar to the last one, only this one is water and not wastewater, so.
Also, then they collect it, I mean, it's, this is something that's needed, yeah, so, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions, concerns? Okay, then we'll vote on resolution 072428. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to item 128, which is number six from our agenda, which is ordinance 1217, an ordinance of the council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, repealing chapter 5.36 property tax and replacing same with a new chapter 5.05 property tax, chapter 5.06 property tax exemptions and deferrals, and chapter 5.07 property tax exemption and deferral criteria.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to make a vote.
Well, you have to put it on the floor first.
Put that on the floor, yeah.
Some, oh, sorry, sorry.
Second. It's been moved by Rainey, seconded by Taylor. Uh, councilmember Rainey, do you have an amendment?
Yes, I do. Okay. So the amendment is as follows, to 5.06.020E, deleting the last, the second to last sentence, in addition to any entity that has been granted a tax exemption, that sentence is gonna be deleted and amend the last sentence by striking an annual review. On 5.06.050, deleting all of A and the letter B and the paragraph under B remains as 5.06.050 in its entirety. 5.07.020, delete C and re-letter the remaining subsections, now C, D, and E. Divide E into E and F as follows. E would be the city clerk and/or assessor, shall require proof in the form they consider necessary, the right to, and the amount of an exemption claimed under subsections A and B of this section. And F would be the city may require such proof under this subsection at any time to ensure ongoing compliance with the eligibility requirements of subsection A and B. It shall be the responsibility of every person who obtains an exemption under this section to notify the city of any change in use, ownership, or rental income. And then finally, to add G as follows, applicants for the nonprofit exemption must apply annually. We were also gonna remove, I don't know the verb which she wants us to use, but.
Can I add this one other part?
Yeah.
To this amendment?
Yeah.
Um, on, under 5.07.060, uh, C1, delete the very end that says "up to five years" and replace it with "a period determined by city council and adopted by ordinance." And then C2, at the end of the sentence, delete "up to five years" and replace it with "a period determined by city council and adopted by ordinance." So all of that can be one amendment.
Okay, this was in our email, I believe, yeah?
Yes, I have copies over there, you have copies here.
Yeah. Will it come back for a second, second reading with those changes?
No, I don't know. That, it's not substantial, that anybody's.
Well, it is substantial, that was my thought, too, but I'd love to see this.
Because we're getting rid of the.
Five years.
Yes, okay, yeah, it can, it absolutely can, so might as well.
The applicant's nonprofit exemption, and the biannually.
It doesn't hurt to.
Sure, I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, it'll come for us another second.
It's possible.
Sure. We'll do.
Okay, that was, motion was made by Rainey, is somebody in the second area? Okay, any, uh, councilman Rainey on the amendment? Councilman Jones? Anybody? All those in favor of the amendment?
I just wanted to call out that what you read from your phone, Susan, was out of our work session, this came out, that wasn't in our packet, that hasn't been emailed to us yet.
Correct.
Okay, that's, wanted that to be clarified. Everything else that councilmember Rainey read was distributed.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Close. Motion carries, give her the main motion, uh, this is not the final reading, so let's just take a verbal voice vote.
I think just, just a comment before we go on to it. I know the good reason for it to come back, although we don't get a lot of comments from the public. It does give the public a chance to read the whole thing, they don't get the emails. So I'll support it for the second reading, that'd be great.
Okay, any other comments? All right. And then all those in favor of ordinance 1217 as amended, say aye.
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 Close. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Takes us down to unfinished business, we have nothing, new and miscellaneous business pending agenda? What do we got, Susan?
Um, joint work session with planning and zoning. That's all I heard, I mean, obviously, we'll have another public hearing next time for a second reading of this ordinance, we'll come back. Um, and how, I, I mean, how does everybody feel about July 17th also? Um, Sam is out of town, that doesn't mean, I mean, u- until that day, she can make a meeting on that day, I guess. Uh, but it sounded like some of you might not be around.
I, I probably won't be. I hope I'm not.
I won't be.
I will be.
Say it again, July 17th, Kathy?
I, I will be.
Okay.
I might likely be in the field as well.
Yeah, I'd say.
Cancel.
Cancel it, and if we need.
Special.
Something on her special meeting, we can do that.
Okay. Let's do that again, uh, so then the next regular is, I don't know, August? Is it the 7th? Okay. Um. Kevin, what's your, um, planning commission meeting in?
Second Tuesday.
Are they doing it next week?
Um, I, I, yes. Yeah, we'll be meeting next Tuesday.
And then, I don't know. I thought maybe we'd try and coincide with theirs, if you guys want to do a joint work session? Or we could coincide with the, you know, before our August one, maybe?
I'll, I'll have two items that will be coming to council out of the next, out of the meeting next week. So I'll have three total items at a minimum that will need to go to the council at whatever the next meeting is.
Okay, and can you mention to them maybe to see if August, what is it, the 6th? 7th will work for them, for a joint meeting? Is that, is that hard for everybody at the beginning of August? I mean, Ken, I bet you'll be somewhere.
Yeah, just calling from Charlotte.
Okay, okay.
Come on, can I make a recommendation on that? I just, I don't know what the appropriate time is, I just want us to have appropriate time, so it's worth my time to be, I mean, trying to cram as much as we want to discuss in 30 minutes? That was pretty challenging. There's a lot to discuss, and I feel like it's at everyone's benefit to get it right. This going on?
So, I guess the question I would have, too, we're having a P&amp;Z meeting, or joint work session, to talk about how, you know, we're talking about maybe the other economic development. Add a work session, we have a separate work session for the commercial side.
It could be, I had just mentioned it because we, because we've been doing work on housing, and we wanted to talk about what are, you know, potential housing incentives, so some of that could be tax exemptions, but there could be other types of incentives, too, so I see that as being a slightly different focus.
Number eight, sir?
Might I recommend, since they are related, separate but related, that we do a two-hour session where we're working with planning and zoning for an hour, and then we take the next hour to kind of fine-tune and give some maybe clear direction, or could be able to come out of that to give clearer direction to staff, that would be my recommendation, a two-hour. Two.
Oh, uh, councilman Zastrow?
Is it Jason?
No, for councilman Sherman, I was just gonna concur, I, I would prefer to have a separate meeting, and a two hours sounds like it would potentially cover it.
Yeah, I agree as well.
And we're thinking August 7th?
Well, no, maybe then it's better to not do it on a meeting night. I mean, I don't know.
It's either the last week of July, or.
That's an open Wednesday, August 31st, or is it July 31st?
Yeah. Other people, how other folks feel about that?
If we did 6, 6 o'clock would work for people, 6 to 8.
Amendment of that.
Words for me?
Yep.
Okay, we'll wanna try for that, we'll try for that. We'll see what planning and zoning says, and I'll get in touch with you if enough of them can, that'd be good. All right.
Great.
So, just someone could.
Yeah.
We're talking about the housing study that's been done for an hour, and then we're gonna have an hour discussion on what we want to move forward with a form for residential.
For economic development incentives.
Yes, like the second part of what, of what we did already.
Just wanted to make sure it was.
But getting planning and zoning's input as well, and learning about the housing study. Okay. July 31st, 6 to 8 work session.
Anything else, yeah, that you want anything?
Is, as we look at canceling meetings, I just want to be mindful that there's a fair amount of work that we still can be doing, so. I mean, if that comes in the form of work sessions, I know there's other whole conversations to be had around revenue and revenue opportunities, I know we're kind of going away, let's get to this economic development kind of squared away, I just don't, I just want us to be mindful of that, that's all. And it all takes time, and then.
We're working on those, too, and they'll probably just come to you in an ordinance form when they're ready.
Sure, but we have on here, if I go back to pending agenda, just other things, head tax, uh, RV fees, there airport landing, there's.
Well, that, the airport landing and the motor vehicle are, are coming.
Those are almost ready.
Okay, perfect, thank you for that update, I'm on. Thank you.
Well, these are the times that we have in between weeks free, and you want to name, I don't know, a, a, a day to do another work session on other stuff. This is the time to do it, because it's easier than trying to schedule it.
I'm throwing out there, there's things that we could fill time with, I know everyone's time is agile, I'm busy, but that's also why we're in this position, so, I think maybe if we, in August, are those gonna come before us? What we were just discussing, how close are they?
They might make a second August meeting, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I was just checking my email, Jess just emailed us and said that she's wrapping up those ordinances, so I would assume.
It could be, could be the first August meeting.
Yeah, I would assume it'll be in August, based on what she just said.
And again, this, just one council member speaking, all are welcome to chime in and tell me I'm out of the weeds, that's fine, but we are gonna be in budget season before we know it, and we're gonna face the reality that we don't have enough money to do the things we want to do, and we're gonna be there, we really need to be talking about how do we get more revenue, and I'm saying, here we are in the middle of the year, let's talk about how we get more revenue, because the way we get more revenue is never a snap of a finger, it's a minimum of 18 months out or longer, so. And that's just the way things move by the time, in the world we live in, with going through just the lawyers and attorneys and everything, so. It's fine, I'm putting it out there, so. I think we can move, let's hear what we have, hopefully it's something about the first August, and I'll uh, bring this all back up at that need, and see if we can put something on the calendar.
Anybody else have anything? Sounds like that first August meeting might be pretty busy with three planning stuffings on there, and some other things, maybe, so.
Can the disposal of the Prince William Sound Science Center building come off the pending agenda?
Did you sell it?
No, but I mean, we're not actively doing anything related to that.
It keeps it on our, fresh on our list, so, we don't have it on there, I mean, for me, it keeps reminding us that it's out there, and what's the update staff, and.
I agree with that.
You know, at some point, we're gonna have to do something with it, whether it falls down or we tear it down.
I think the next update, we, we get a bigger.
Sure.
I guess I'm saying, it does have to have it there, it's just kind of a reminder.
Okay, did it for pending agenda?
Sure.
It's almost time to start recruiting for our boards and commissions.
Quit it, it's just July, you guys are rushing the seasons.
Try and go any more ways till August, and then it's September, and then everything's for a month, and you're in November, and after that, appointments may exist. Okay, let's move on to audience participation, anything? Anybody want to talk about, doesn't have to be on our agenda? Anything at all? We see nobody rushing the mic, we will move on to council comments, starting online, councilmember Sherman.
Thanks, Mayor Allison, uh, I guess I'm gonna concur with, um, councilman Kinsman, I feel I know I'm not there, and I apologize for that, it's, you know, medical, um, I will be in Cordova for the next two weeks, um, but then I'm facing five weeks of radiation in Anchorage, so I have to do everything by phone, but I agree that it's, I feel like we're, um, there's lots we could be doing, and they, there was lots we had on our plate, there was lots we wanted to try and accomplish as a group, so I'm not opposed to work sessions and/or staff throwing information at us and crossing things off that pending agenda list. Um, not one for putting things off anymore, so. Um, I really appreciated Dr. Saunders' comments, I'm gonna reach out to her, it's amazing when you're in the medical community in Anchorage and Providence. It's amazing when you're in the medical community in Anchorage and Providence says, "Oh, you have a hospital in Cordova," or they said, "Oh, you have a CT scan in Cordova." "Oh, what can you do in Cordova?" Well, there's a lot we can do, and obviously, word isn't reaching some of Providence's ears. So, I will reach out to her directly to try and share some of my insights that I've had in the last two months. And I think there's a lot we could be doing that people could benefit from in our community and not have to travel to Anchorage. And other than that, I just think the Elastirine Highway system is superb. They should have a mileage plan, and I wrote my comment in, because if I had not had ferry service in the last two months, I'm not quite sure how I would have accomplished all my medical appointments. So, I want to take that for granted, that service, no attempt, basically.
Not today, Kathy.
And I guess that's it for me.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate that. Councilmember Zastrow?
Thank you, Mayor. No comments.
Okay, let's go around the table here. The Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, thanks everybody for being here. And then I'd like to thank Mr. Trumbly, Paul Trumbly, for his years of service as our local fire marshal, and wish him well in his future endeavors, as he decides to retire, so, thanks, Paul.
Okay, Councilwoman Rainey?
I have anything to add to that?
Councilwoman Jones?
No comment.
I'll just mention that Salmon Jam is coming up on the 20th, so your salmon runs are gonna be that morning, and then there's music Friday night, the 19th, and Saturday, the 20th, and small fry for kids that afternoon from 3 to 5, so, all that's going on. And thank you for, to the city manager and the staff for all the work you do to prepare good packets.
Thank you, Councilmember Kinsman.
Yeah, along those lines with the, what Councilmember Taylor said, yeah, thank you, Paul Trumbly, for your years of service. Also with that, I just wanted to, probably Mattson as well, many of you, maybe he took the position somewhere else, and he was the fire chief. I know he's kind of, but one foot in, one foot out, but he's more one foot out. So, just also thank him for his years of service to the community. I know he is still a resource, but, yeah, a lot of good has come from that as well. Other than that, I've been really enjoying our near $40 million harbor. It's a really nice facility, but I also have to myself, it's better beat for $40 million. But it is a really nice facility, so a lot of thank you to, obviously, everyone. And that has helped to make that happen. And we look forward to hopefully something in the future for the North Harbor as well. And I'm putting it out there, I'm really trying to stick and go swim upstream on this one. We have a South Harbor and we have a North Harbor. We have a South Harbor and we have a North Harbor. That's what we have.
I agree.
Not a new old, new old, not a old, new, old, new. It is a south and a north harbor, so, and I know that's not popular. Thank you.
All righty, any other last words? Okay, if any go further business, we will adjourn meeting.